Good evening and welcome to the April 11th, 2024 Meeting of the Abington Township Board of Commissioners. May I have a roll call, please?
Commissioners Brodsky.
Here.
Rothman.
Here.
De Placido.
Here.
Leanie Martin.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
Weingrubb.
Here.
Henry. Depone.
Here.
Young Guard.
Here.
Stigman.
Here.
Bowle. Schreiber.
Here.
Bowman.
Here.
Vice President Behe.
Here.
President Hecker.
Here. Please note that Commissioner Bowle is excused this evening, and Commissioner Henry will be joining us momentarily. Can we please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I have two announcements this evening. The first is that the agenda item PW-02-081221, we will be taking no action on that agenda item this evening, and it will be put forward for consideration at a later Board of Commissioners meeting. Secondly, pleased to report that the township has received gold certification through the U.S. Green Building Council. The lead for city certification process evaluated and measured a variety of environmental, social, and economic metrics across nine categories. This gold certification demonstrates Abington's commitment to sustainability and its continued integration into our township operations. And I'm going to turn it over momentarily to Manager Manfredi.
Thank you, President Hecker, members of the board. Very quickly, this is an incredible honor. It is the result of a lot of work by the EAC and one person in particular who spearheaded it and was the tip of the spear. Ms. Vat McIlvein, if you would, please. I'd like to recognize Ashley McIlvein, Assistant Township Manager, Assistant Chief Administrative Officer. The work and time that she put in along with the EAC, we would not have achieved this. And this is an achievement because this talks about the excellence across all departments, various committees, and the work that is being done throughout the township. So I just wanted to recognize Ashley's work.
Thank you, Manager Manfredi. Board of Commissioners, this lead for city certification process has been a collaborative effort. We began it nearly four years ago. And when we undertook this certification, I honestly had no idea the amount of work that we were about to embark on. And it has taken hours of collaboration with the departments, evaluating our operations, getting a sense of, you know, the various initiatives we do and measuring those. And the work that it has taken in collaboration with the Environmental Advisory Council, who has just been incredible, the Shade Tree Commission, Human Relations Commission, I mean, this really dove into our operations across the board. And it demonstrates the commitment, not only now, of the Board of Commissioners, and I thank all of you for that, but years and years of commitment, decades even, in our recycling program, in our parks programs. And just truly incredible. So I just wanted to take the opportunity to thank you all tonight, Office of the Township Manager, all of our departments and the work that's gone into it, and especially the Shade Tree Commission, Environmental Advisory Council, and Human Relations Commission. So thank you and congratulations to everyone and to the residents, too, because our everyday sustainability efforts, down to the residents, were measured. And we couldn't have done this without them. So we will be releasing a few videos to kind of explain the categories that we were evaluated on. And so please check in and visit our website. We'll have a short introductory video we hope to go out tomorrow. And you'll be hearing more about this. So www.abbingtonba.gov. Thank you.
Thank you, Ashley. Thank you, Karen, to the Environmental Advisory Council. Rich, thanks for bringing this forward. And let's give her a round of applause. Okay. We will now move forward to take public comment on matters that are on the agenda this evening for the board. If anyone here in the room wishes to speak to anything that the board will be voting on, now will be your time to do so. Please come forward and state your name. Yes, come on forward. Yes, thank you. Just state your name and verify that you're an Abington resident.
Thanks. I'm an Abington resident. My name's Dr. Irene Herford. I'm speaking today about the effort to change the zoning along the Abington Club. The first thing I want to say is that, and I'm going to repeat it at the end, you know, once this land is paved, it's paved for good. We'll never reclaim it. It will never be green space again. So as we make this decision, I want us to remember we always have the opportunity to develop it. Once developed, we never have the opportunity, really, to turn it back into open space. There's really four issues that I see. The first is current zoning. The Galman Group is proposing a new medical office building. There are about 11 medical office buildings within a five-to-10-minute drive from this location. In fact, driving up from the golf course to this building, I passed six. Is a new medical office building something that our community wants or needs? Galman bought this land, zoned for conservation and recreation. They have every right to use that land as it's currently zoned. They also have the right to sell the land. No one held a gun to their head to buy it, and no one is forcing them to keep it. What they don't have the right to do is force a zoning change to pave it. This does not benefit our community, and our community does not want this. There's plenty of zoned commercial real estate locally available. They can buy that and build there. There's almost no green space in the area. Driving this distance where I passed six medical office buildings, I passed no green space. It's heavily developed and paved. Use existing paved commercial space and maintain contiguous green space for our community, the local flora and fauna. The second point is tax revenue. The Galman Group is not making an effort, as far as I can tell, to maintain or secure new leases at the pavilion, a nine-story office building that includes medical offices. I'm actually a tenant there. That's where my medical practice is. I'm on the ninth floor. There are about four other occupied offices on that entire floor. And that's true for the entire building. The building sits nearly completely vacant. I happen to know, having spoken to other tenants, that their efforts to sustain their leases with small amendments, like going to a yearly lease or tapering the rate of rent increase, was met with just a complete no. It did not appear that the Galman Group was interested in negotiating with their existing tenants, and those tenants left. They've not been filling those spaces. I haven't seen any new tenants occupy spaces in the pavilion. So if you think that you're going to get a higher tax revenue by allowing Galman to build, think about the spaces that they already own and do not occupy. Landscaping. So one of the things Galman plans to do is offset the loss of green space with new green space. This plan is an affront to our community. Their plan is to literally plant a few trees and bushes along their parking lots. This is called landscaping. This is not contiguous green space, and the commissioners should not be bullied into pretending that this is a reasonable offset in any way. And finally, litigation. I've heard that one of the reasons that the commissioners might be willing to entertain this plan by the Galman Group is that the Galman Group has a history of suing and winning their suits for zoning changes. I understand that litigation is expensive and time-consuming. However, are we, as a community, going to allow the Galman Group, who have not maintained leases on their existing properties, who have not demonstrated a good-faith effort to offset or protect green space, who have proposed a medical office building that the community neither wants nor needs, to bully our commissioners and community into allowing them to do whatever they want because of litigation threat? We should be defending what is best for our community. Once again, once paved, that land can never be unpaved. Once lost, that green space is lost for good. Why are we putting the needs and wishes of the Galman Group ahead of the needs and wishes of our community? So I would urge the commissioners to vote no on rezoning that recreation and conservation land. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Are there other residents who wish to speak?
Please do not make me explain to you continually, do not make me explain to you continually how I'm talking about what's on the agenda because then I'm not heard, okay?
If it's related to the agenda.
No, 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 it's on the agenda.
Okay, so please state your name.
Okay, my name is Adele Cubell. For the Galmans, you are willing to compromise safety and lower the standard of living. Four homeowners immediately put their homes up for sale in the Lenox area. These people seem to feel, and it's true, that the Galmans seem to go first, second, and third in Abington. The decline of Abington is obvious. You do not respect green space. The Abington Club only has a nine-hole golf course as it is. It's beautiful open space. Golf courses are disappearing for apartment buildings regularly. This is supposed to be green space. It's supposed to stay as green space. The Galmans already opened. They're very expensively priced apartments, and immediately the congestion and the trash in the area went up. This area is going to see a large-scale supermarket soon. The Jenkin Town area is going to see many, many, I can't even tell you how many apartments. I see them coming continually. There's more than we are being told. The streets are extremely dangerous in Abington. We cannot afford to make the streets more and more dangerous. I took this photo. People should not have to go to metered parking. You're allowing restaurants to open up without the proper amount of parking. You are allowing apartment buildings to open up and do business here without the proper amount of parking. You are going to start charging. That is a step down for Abington, not a step up. This is where you ask people to cross the street to go to nifty fifties. I passed by there. The light right by the crossing, again, was hit by cars. Right by the crossing, it was down. I went to the police. They said the driver who hit the light on the sidewalk failed to report the accident. I was the first to report it. I am seeing students, high school students yesterday, it seems there was a day off from school. They're standing in these crosswalks that you allow on Old Jorke Road that are very dangerous and waiting. They can't get across because the piles of traffic keep coming and going. There's going to be immense development in the Jenkin Town Noble area, immense development. And you want us to pay for parking? The car crashes are horrible here. Also, you should not be doing anything to change the Recreation and Advisory Committee's scope and duties. You have too much control. You are choking Abington with your control. All of these committees are controlled by you. You want to pay the people you want to sit on them? The agendas are picked by you? We're really suffering.
Ms. Cubell, please conclude your comments. Your time has expired.
Please consider all the accidents. We do not need more congestion from the Galmans. Or metered parking, that's a step down.
Is there anyone else, President, that wishes to speak?
Hi, I'm Matt Glazek. I live on 100 block of Holmcrest Road. I feel like these other folks, that this change in zoning is a bad move for Abington, and you should not vote for it. I think, you know, just in the news recently, you've seen that Melrose Golf Club is proposed to be sold and turned into a bunch of homes. It also happened to other golf clubs in the area recently. This golf club acts as a buffer between this corporate area and our neighborhood. And I don't want to see any action that is taken to hurt the viability of the Abington Club as a golf club. Already taking away the third hole with the dirt that was dumped from the flats development has already really damaged, you know, that golf course. And the land that they're proposing taking and offsetting, I feel like, is almost a joke. They should be doing that because, you know, it's the right thing to do to beautify and want to have people occupy their spaces, not because they're trying to create a bigger parking lot. They also had proposed areas that just don't make sense, right? They're going to be taking away parking from the Abington Club. They're going to be putting green space in an area that would make accessing the groundskeeping equipment from the Abington Club going through greens. It doesn't make sense what they proposed. I also feel that, you know, the, just this morning, we had Ben Sanchez and Art Haywood at a ribbon-cutting ceremony for restoration of the creek that runs through the Abington Club. And a lot of that creek is in poor shape because of all the runoff that is coming from these parking lots. So creating more parking lots to run off into that is kind of antithetical to that whole restoration process. So I really would hope and advise that you take that under consideration when you make your decision tonight. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Maria Kieran. I'm an Abington resident. Zoning is supposed to control private land use for the common good. So private property owners' interests must be weighed against public interest. A vote by the commissioners tonight to revoke the long-held protections for this valued green space that we're discussing tonight would prioritize the financial interests of a single business over the public's interest without a valid reason for doing so. Land set aside for conservation and recreation in an area as densely built as ours shouldn't be rezoned unless there is a significant demonstrated need. How in the world does another medical office building, excuse me, and an oversized parking lot meet that threshold? Especially when a vacant medical office space and acres of parking spaces exist right next door at the pavilion. In addition to being part of the fabric of this community for many years, this green space protects the headwaters of Shoemaker Run Creek. This creek is a tributary of the Delaware River, which supplies drinking water to millions of people in our region. Existing parking lots at the pavilion contribute to the high pollution levels in the creek, where chloride readings are comparable to ocean water. If you allow Galman Group to pave over this land uphill from the creek, you will be making water quality problems even worse. Lastly, I would like to note that I am currently in the process of putting in new sidewalks around my house. I'm not doing this because I want to, but because the township has rules about maintaining our sidewalks for the benefit of the entire community. Galman Group acquired land that came with certain rules that govern how the land could be used. Rather than following our rules, Galman is trying to change them for their own benefit and to the detriment of the rest of us. If you let them succeed with so little basis for doing so, how will you be able to stop the next person who doesn't want to follow the rules either? Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the room that wishes to speak? And if not, we'll turn to Zoom.
Laura Lehman, you're unmuted.
Hi. So first of all, I'd like to say, Commissioner Hecker, the audio was turned off again. The whole room collapsed. Not a single voice went through any of the mics in the room. That is very, very dramatically obvious that that is controlling the sound, and that is not part of the meeting or how it is supposed to run. Secondly, when you tell us that there's an item off the agenda, please don't read off a number, but tell us what the item is. I have no idea what you took off the agenda.
It's the only item of unfinished business this evening.
I wouldn't know that. What is it, please?
It has to do with the dedication of properties on Washington Lane.
Thank you. Mr. Brodsky, at the end of the last meeting, decided after the resident had spoke and could not get up to the microphone anymore, that he would add a contrary view. That is not your job. Your job is to hear the resident.
Ms. Lehman, this comment period is about items on the agenda this evening?
Well, how the agenda is managed.
That's not an agenda item this evening.
And you're allowing Mr. Manfredi and other commissioners to come up after comments is what I am talking about.
Right, and the time to talk about that would be at the end of the meeting for general matters of township business.
Are you reimbursing my time on this, please?
I'm redirecting you to, if you have any comments about matters on the agenda now, would be the time to make them.
I'm making them.
No, you're actually not making a comment about an agenda item.
After I speak on each of these topics, I do not want you allowing commissioners to undo my words. Thank you. And I agree very heartily with the people who spoke against the zoning change. Please do not make that zoning change there. The properties downhill there are flooding. When the Longhorn tried to go in, that was a huge issue, and why the Longhorn did not go in. So please do not allow any recreational or green space to be taken. And the comments that were made were eloquently made. Please hear them and vote no. Ward 10, last time, absolutely unconscionable that the candidates for Ward 10 Commissioner were not given proper instructions, that they needed someone to nominate them, and also that the residents of Ward 10 never knew about those candidates, let alone meeting them and being able to tell you.
Ms. Lehman, that is also not on the agenda? So if you have any final comments related to items we're voting on, please get to the meeting.
I do have a final comment. Thank you. We have a new manager coming. It is very important that we find a new manager, and he is given instructions not to behave the way this manager has behaved. While we have won gold awards, we have not been able to pick up dumps of trash, fix the curbs, or do any of the things that the residents are asking you to do. And the disrespect by not answering questions and the disrespect of some of the things that I'm talking about here tonight is something that we do not want in a manager. So when you hire a managerial search firm, please make clear that, number one, you first will find out what your residents want you to look for in a manager. And number two, you will make it clear to the search firm that that is the kind of person we're looking for, one who respects the residents, where questions are answered, where the people are not busy chasing down gold awards, but they're actively chasing down the life and quality of life of the residents.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Lehman.
Jonathan Rosenbaum.
Yes, thank you so much. I'm interested in speaking about the central concern of the evening with regard to the Galman proposal and the medical building, but most especially relating to the loss of green space. Others have spoken before me with far more eloquence and substance, but I do want to underline that many of us who, in effect, abut the golf club, the Abington Golf Club, realize that we benefit from that green space as does the entire community. And in the past, Galman had, as was mentioned in passing, a proposal for the Longhorn and added a substantial amount of parking space to that proposal. At the time, I myself found the number of spaces that Longhorn had in Warrington and realized that the proposal was about double of the numbers that Longhorn has in Warrington. In other words, for some reason, Galman simply wanted additional space without any substantive logic or reason. But more directly, I have been in touch with our own commissioner, who's been very kind and reaching out to a number of us. And we spoke with people who are in houses along Lenox, one of whom said, "That's fine, I'm willing to consider it," and then quickly put his house up for sale. A second sale sign appeared shortly thereafter. And my concern is that if people who have a longstanding commitment to living in the community are as uncomfortable as those people to the extent of actually selling their homes, beautiful homes, along Lenox, then there is clearly a connection. The issue of drainage has not, to my knowledge, been substantively addressed. In the past, when Galman was asked about such things, they said, "Well, we'll do what we can." The issue is very real for those who are directly in the line, as it were, of the green space. But for the community as a whole, we need to preserve a magnificent neighborhood to which young people are coming, but only if they feel secure in the continuity and beauty of the area. There is commercial space galore, as has been demonstrated previously. And for Galman to take additional parking space, add to the issue of drainage, and take away from the very element of green space that is functional and substantive would be a great loss for our community and ultimately for the tax base as well. So I ask you to seriously think this over and candidly to reject this proposal. It's not acceptable simply because a large commercial enterprise asks that the commissioners respond affirmatively. This is something that's important for the well-being of not just those who are in the neighborhood, but for Abington as a whole and for the beauty of our community writ large. I thank you very much for hearing me, and I hope you will, with great seriousness, consider what I think is a pivotal point for the well-being of our society and community.
Thank you for your comments, sir. And with that, we will conclude the public comment period. And before I go to the consent agenda, Manager Manfredi reminded me that we had one additional person that we wanted to introduce to the board and to the community this evening.
Thank you, President Hecker. Ms. Toley, if you would please, just stand. Jessica Toley has been with the township for more than 20 years in the Parks and Recreation Department and with the retirement of Mr. Lukens. I want to make sure everyone knows and meets Jessica Toley, the new Director of Parks and Recreation, who I am certain with her love for the township and years of service will take us to another level with all the things that we have planned for the future with Parks and Recreation.
Excellent.
So everyone knows who she is.
No, welcome and congratulations. We look forward to working with you. Okay, we will now turn to the consent agenda. And I turn things over to Board Vice President Matt Behe.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for passage of the consent agenda listed as items A through J. And I so move second.
It has been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Consent agenda carries. As mentioned previously, we are not going to be taking action on the one matter listed under unfinished business. So we will now turn to new business. And I will once again turn things over to Board Vice President Matt Behe.
First, I notice BOC-10-041124, motion to appoint Baker Tilly, US LLP, to perform the Township Manager's search as outlined in their proposal. And I so move second.
It has been moved and seconded. We will have plenty of opportunities in the coming months to acknowledge Rich's outstanding service to the township. But I didn't know if you wanted to say anything this evening or wait till a later date. Okay. So before I open it up for comments or questions, you know, we need to get this right. We need to make sure that we continue along the path of momentum that we have built over the last seven years. And I think having the assistance of a firm that specializes in these types of searches will lead us to make the proper choice. And that's why I'm in favor of us moving forward on this this evening. And with that, I will open it up for any comments or questions. Commissioner Weingrubb, you look like you want to say something.
Thank you. Do we have a proposed timeline for, we know that Manager Manfredi's, his resignation is effective January, correct? If somehow we can convince him to not resign, I.
We've tried. We've tried.
That would be better. But in terms of what are we, what do we as a board, what are we looking for in terms of hiring somebody if we want an overlap or anything like that?
We'll have a detailed timeline that they're working through, but if we pass this this evening, work gets underway this month with the idea that we would be in position to appoint a new manager at the November board meeting. That's the goal.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Brodsky.
I just saw the chairman of the manager go, and I would suggest that whoever replaces him has big shoes to fill, but in terms of my word and what I wanted in my end of the world, he's always stepped up to the place, has always been responsive, has always been there in terms of what needs to get done, and it's just no nonsense. Let's get it done. So he's a guy, and sorry to see him go, sad to see him go, but I understand at some point in time, but he's a good guy, and he puts up with it. Just kidding.
Any other comments or questions for members of the board? All right, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion carries.
Next item is BOC-11-041124. It's motion to open a hearing regarding the ordinance number 2213, which would amend the official zoning map of Abington Township by rezoning 2.621 acres of land from RC Recreation Conservation District to BC Business Center Foxcroft District, and I so move.
I'll second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
This is to open the hearing, not taking a vote on the matter?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Mr. Solicitor, the hearing is opened.
Thank you, Mr. Hecker. This is a hearing on an ordinance amending the Abington Township zoning map by rezoning 2.621 acres of land from the RC Recreation Conservation District to the BC Business Center Foxcroft District. The proposed ordinance will make a change to Section 1. It contains the zoning map amendment to rezone a portion of parcel 30-00-42724-01-4 from RC Recreation Conservation District to the BC Business Center Foxcroft District. All of the other aspects of this ordinance do not change. The notice of this hearing was advertised in the Bucks County Courier-Times on March 28, 2024. The applicant this evening is represented by attorney Mark Jonas, and we would ask that Mr. Jonas come forward and present any information, documents, or testimony he wishes. Since this is a text amendment or a map amendment, excuse me, there is no party status for these hearings. They would simply be public comment, and since this was an agenda item, we took public comment for those individuals who were interested at the beginning of the hearing. Anyone else who has not already spoken who wishes to speak after Mr. Jonas makes his presentation would be permitted to do so.
Okay.
Good evening. Nice to be back. This presentation has been seen by the board commissioners before. As the solicitor has said, this is the map amendment on the mark termist on behalf of the Goleman Group. This is not a text change, so all we are doing is moving the zoning district line. We have a very short presentation. This event has been reviewed and endorsed by the Township Planning Commission, and it was reviewed by the County Planning Commission. And as a former chairman of the County Planning Commission, who's been doing this for a long time, I can say I have never seen a shorter review letter from the County Planning Commission in my career. The County Planning Commission said, "The County Planning Commission supports the applicant's proposal without comment, as we have found it to be generally consistent with the township and county comprehensive plans." One sentence. So this is, as you know, a very significant multi-building, multi-use property that dates back to 1968. The previous owner went through bankruptcy. The Goleman Group acquired it in 1996 and has spent a good bit of money to renovate it. It has a lot of old design and infrastructure, which affects its attraction to new tenants, which is one of the reasons why we are looking at a proposed new medical office building to help provide a shot in the arm for a shopping center and a multi-use development. This is part of a master plan that the Goleman Group envisions. This is shown on the board. There are a number of aspects to this, including pedestrian connectivity, green areas. It's important to note that this is only the first step in a very detailed land use process. If the board votes to change the zoning of this 2.6 acre parcel, the next step would be land development. Land development deals with the details and the construction and improvements, stormwater management, landscaping, and whatever, although this applicant has already done a lot of work in looking at the existing conditions, including the abutting medical office building that exists, the existing vegetation, which will be supplemented during land development. This shows the zoning line that would change and move the zoning line from RC to the business campus of Foxcroft. This is an aerial view that shows existing conditions, in particular the existing landscaping and buffers that provide some buffers between the Lennox Road residents and the proposed medical office building. You'll see the existing medical office building that is between the proposed medical office building and Lennox Road. This is another view just of the zoning plan. It's important to note that the golf course is not on the property that we are asking rezoning. The golf course is functioning independently. It is on a property that is owned by the John Barnes trustees. This does not affect the golf course. The golf course has already been adjusted in the past to exist as it is without any adverse impact from this proposed rezoning. This is some aerial view and elevations of what the existing vegetation looks like, the existing medical office building and the proposed medical office building. We've talked about green area. Again, this is just a zoning, a rezoning, so this is not land development, where we deal with tree replacement and amplification of buffers. But we looked at this during a long process, and this application is one of the few applications you'll see where there will be a net gain of 1,700-plus square feet of green area. So if this proceeds with the new building and parking and loss of some previous areas, there will be an equal or plus new green area just as in this preliminary stage. Land development will flesh us out with more buffering and details. So again, this is, we're trying to assist a very important property at the southern end of the township to attract new tenants. This is a low use, proposed use. It is very different from the proposed restaurant, and we certainly ask that the board of commissioners to vote affirmatively on their request. Thank you very much.
It'd be appropriate if any commissioners have any questions for Mr. Jonas. I realize that a representative from the Goleman Group is here as well. If there are any questions that could be put to that representative, that would be fine as well.
Okay. Commissioner Weinberg, you... Oh, Commissioner Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Jonas. In terms of land development, this seems like it's a concept, this is a concept plan as I see it. In terms of the details, that would, you're saying you would go through land development?
Absolutely. It would go through land development. It was reviewed, again, by the County Planning Commission, by the Township Planning Commission at a public meeting. That's when the very, the nitty-gritty of land use is done, the details of stormwater management, of landscaping, soil and erosion control. It's, we often see that when development occurs, often existing conditions that need fixing are addressed. If there are existing stormwater management issues that emanate or affect this property, that will be reviewed by the township engineer. So there could be a net improvement certainly in stormwater management. Certainly, the ordinance and the law does not provide a deterioration from existing conditions.
You also heard comments about a buffer, right? And that buffer between the commercial property and the residents, I guess, on Meeting House Road. Does this in any way, or is this plan in any way affect the golf course, golf course operations, or the green space between the commercial property and the residents?
It does not. It does not. It does not. The...
Oh, okay. Also, have, has Goleman been in touch with folks on Lennox Road to discuss any of their needs and any considerations that they've had?
We had a specific request by a property owner who had already decided to put his property up for sale, and he was concerned about what was being proposed, and we had a site visit with that property owner.
Okay. Should this go through, and again, you have to get through the board of commissioners, but you have, we have your assurance and Goleman's assurance that it's going to go through all planning, shade tree, EAC, whatever process is necessary in order for land development, stormwater, shrubbery, the whole thing, correct?
And that's absolutely correct. And this is a property owner that is here now and is not, is not just subject to an agreement of sale. This is a property owner who is very committed to this property.
Last question. You keep mentioning that there's going to be a medical office building, but that is your sole, whole intended use in this case?
That is our intended use.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Commissioner Brown.
You had mentioned that there's going to be a net gain in green space. Is that public access green space?
It's part of the entire town center, so it would be public access. If you look at the details of the plan earlier on, there are a number of plans for this revitalization of the town center that are all available for the public, including pedestrian connectivity. We've been asked by township staff to consider connectivity in connection with existing projects, and this is a developer who's already willing and able to do that.
Okay. My second question is, what's the total acreage of the current pavilion property? And then, how much of that, or has Goleman done any studies on how much of that acreage currently goes unused to look for some alternative ways of reinvigorating the space? Like, does it, does that particular space need to come from that area? Having grown up in the area, I've known the pavilion basically all my life, right? So I've seen its ups and its downs. And in my mind's eye, there's a good amount of, you know, parking lot space that could be. My question is, has Goleman Group considered any alternatives? And if so, why has Goleman Group decided to pursue this route?
Well, that's a lot of questions in that one question. So the site we're looking at now on the exhibit is the entire town center. I don't recall the total acreage, but it is a number of different tax parcel units that comprise the town center. We are looking, we are looking this... You have a lot of detail here as part of a, just a map change in terms of looking at the property. Our consultants looked hard to see where they could add green areas, and this is just as part of the concept plan. These green areas are in various locations. There are sitting areas, gathering areas for the public. So that's all part of this review. The parking is always a problem because this is in existing use. We have a lot of different uses that require different amounts of parking. I don't know that we have any excess parking in terms of what the code requires. So that is always problematic. It has a lot of history, and there are a lot of previous approvals that tie in the amount of parking. Sometimes there are possibilities in terms of reducing parking. The ordinance has parking reduction, you know, characteristics and standards and opportunities. But this is, except for what we're talking about tonight in terms of the new proposed medical office building, this is a pretty well-established property with maybe not a lot of flexibility in terms of what we can do on the balance of the property while maintaining compliance with the township. The last thing we want to do is get a letter from the zoning officer that we're violating the code or Mr. Manfredi, so just send me an email. So, but during land development, that is a time, and we certainly will be looking at not only the property we're talking about for the rezoning and this proposed medical office building, but the entire site. It's all part of the interaction, and that's why it's being viewed as a town center transformation as a whole.
And has that calculus been done in regards to the parking lot, the parking spaces need for the uses of the buildings on the property? Has that been done?
It has been done. We've been using Bowler Engineering, which is a very well-respected and experienced. And we haven't seen, if we had found some excess parking that wasn't required, that would be part of the green area that we've already showing with a net gain. So we'll continue to look at. Perhaps during the process, with input from the Township Planning Commission and the County Planning Commission, perhaps there'll be an opportunity, if there is too much parking, to see what we can do in terms of the code, because it's always a question of what the code permits, and we can't put the property into non-compliance. You're welcome.
Commissioners, dispossess it and then speak, man.
Thank you, Commissioner. You asked, I think, two out of the four questions.
Yeah. I've got two more to go, sorry.
Well, staying with the parking, how many offices or suites do you project to be in this new building?
We don't know it yet. Again, this is just concept. We know it's a three-story building, so a lot of this is going to depend on the market and responding to Mr. Commissioner Weinberg's point, what the market is and who we can attract as a tenant.
Okay.
So it's just too early to do that. Certainly, when it comes to land development, we have a definitive tenant. We'll be able to sort of pin down exactly, responses to your question, how many suites, the sizes of the suites, or whatever. But, you know, this location, if we can attract a medical office, you know, occupant and all, it is very different and much more compelling than some of the old space, which, of course, we are dealing with vacancies. There are a number of vacancies throughout the county and other municipalities, but we've been hampered by some very, very old infrastructure and design.
So, yeah, I realize we can't see inside the building, but we can see the parking lot on the new renderings. So how many parking spots are we talking about for this building?
We, I don't recall the number, but it is code compliant. I'm looking at, let's see, 24 spaces on a first-level parking. I don't have the total count, but it is, certainly in terms of the concept, it was code compliant in terms of the number of spaces.
Okay, and jumping off of what Commissioner Brown said, has there been, have you reached out to any of the other... I don't know who owns the parking lots in the back, but what I do notice, because I'm not too far from here, is that they're virtually empty. There's one parking lot that, if you're looking at the building right in front and you just kind of make a slight left, that's the one that's above the... There's a, there's a business on the bottom. I think it's adult daycare. And then you wrap around, and that parking lot, I think, I maybe, the most crowded I've ever seen that lot was when the lobster truck comes, and they do the little food truck thing. But basically, no one parks in that lot. So again, the question is, was there a plan or an ask to perhaps try to utilize the spaces that aren't being used in order to eliminate some space and not have to, what did you say? Move a zoning district line?
I think, I think remote space would be a problem in terms of the tenant, and particularly for medical office building, people who may not be able to walk for a long distance. Parking needs to be close to the use such as this. I think in terms of, it goes back to the other question, and your colleague brought it up. We've looked at the parking many times, and maybe this is another opportunity to look at it. Part of the, it's always difficult to take a look at the occupancy in terms of parking if you do have vacancies. If this building were to move forward and attract tenants for the new building, then hopefully that would spill over and attract new tenants into the rest of the town center. That would impact empty parking spaces now. But if there's an opportunity with township staff and professional consultants, if they believe that this property as a whole, with the multitude of uses, is overparked, we're certainly willing to get into that discussion. We'd like to, I mean, there are concepts of reserved parking that's easier to do with new development as opposed to existing development. But if there's an opportunity to eliminate some parking, add new green area, not compromise either the code compliance or compromise the ability of this property to function, we're certainly going to look at that. It would be in our best interest to do that. We'd love to add more green. This is, this is a very old property with a lot of constraints on it.
Thank you. Commissioner Spiegelman.
Thank you, President Hecker. My questions also dovetail off of my friend and colleague, Commissioner Brown's. There were some very cogent points made, I think, by the neighbors, and I want to address two, I think, I think they're both attributed to Dr. Herrford. It, you know, it's a significant distinction that was made between landscaping and... and, you know, contiguous green space. Could you show again on the map, and I apologize for making you go back to another page, but could you show us where that additional green space, which again, I know, fully acknowledge it is more than, more than what would be required? Can you show again where that is?
Okay, so the, so that, those are the, the, at least initial areas of green space that we believe we can add, and that would offset with a positive of 1,700 square feet, the lost green area from the development and construction of a building and parking.
And, I mean, from here, my vision isn't what it used to be. It was never that great, but, okay, thank you. Okay, so it, it does look like there is some continuity and contiguity. We're talking about, you know, I mean, obviously, there's some, there's some things that are in effect planters, but the larger, the larger areas are, the intention, and if this were to move forward, the commitment would be, that that's legitimate, that's legitimate green space.
Yes, it, it was looked at by both the civil engineers and by, by planners. I mean, we, we did a full court press to see, given the constraints of this property, what we could do on the balance of the property beyond the confines of where the medical office building would go. And, and this is just, as has been pointed out several times in this presentation, this is a concept plan. I mean, you know, oftentimes for a map change, you might just get the, the one plan that shows where the line is and where the, you know, the before and after, but we've been doing, we've been working on this for a long time with a full court press, and the message we got informally from, from staff and consultants was, try to find green area if you could. And I think it's, it's a pretty darn good start to be able to provide a, a net gain of green area after you've constructed a building and parking.
I know we're not here to litigate the pavilion, but, I mean, you yourself said that, that this is, you know, this building would represent a shot in the arm to a long, you know, a long-developed area, significant, you know, area of commercial development on the southern portion of the township that has been languishing. I think we're all on the same page about that. This isn't the first time that we've, that a long-established, the owner of a long-established development has come to us and asked for a shot in the arm, and that, there's nothing inherently evil, doesn't, just, just considering that doesn't make us somehow, you know, doesn't mean that we're somehow capitulating to the, to the will of a developer. We, I mean, township revenue, that's a big part of the, the concerns that we have in our purview. But the pavilion, you know, the pavilion is, it's a unique, it's a unique building. I used to shop there every single day when I lived in the Benson Apartments. Without, again, I know there's nothing we can commit you to, but are we looking at, you know, as far as this shot in the arm, is that a bridge to a, to a renewed and refurbished pavilion? Or is that a bridge to just scrapping it and starting over? What, I mean, is there anything you can speak to as far as the future of the pavilion?
I think the shot in the arm is, is the side benefit. The, we think there will be spillover with, with this building to attract other tenants, maybe residential and commercial tenants who would want to be in close proximity to an office building on the same site. So, the, the shot in the arm is, is, is just, again, a side benefit, but even in, in early discussions we've had, we have been looking at interior changes and renovations and transforming hallways. So, this is all part, this is, I say, this is not just this, this particular parcel, this is the entire town center, and that includes retrofitting existing buildings, and we can't probably do much, I'm not an architect, as you know, Commissioner, we can't do probably much about existing windows, but certainly interior spaces, utilities, hallways and all amenities, that's, that's all, that's all part of this agenda.
I mean, because, yeah, that, that is the part that's hurting, so, okay.
And, and, and let, and again, let's not, let's put the shot in the arm aside, both the township and the county planning commissions believe that this is, this makes sense in terms of the township comprehensive plan and the property. And if I may have a second?
Yeah.
A gentleman here who I, who I recognize says that they're going to be doing some substantial painting of the outside, and in the last year, they spent a million dollars in transforming hallways.
Okay.
I think one of the advantages you have here is this is, you know, this is a property owner that's been here since 1996. This, this, this property owner is not walking away from this property. This property owner is not giving up on buildings that so far have some vacancies. This is a property owner who's coming to the commission to say, this is what we plan to do here, and we're asking for this as, as, as part of this transformation, and we're certainly encouraged and pleased that both of the planning commissions endorse this. It's a big undertaking, and this is a developer that has, a property owner is more appropriate, has the, the means and the willingness to do that.
I appreciate that. I, I have a long history of, of irritating the gentleman in question with, with my various comments over the course of many years, so I legitimately appreciate that.
Let's not get into irritating, because that's, I'd rather not talk about myself that way.
That is, that's sort of your wheelhouse. No, thank you, I appreciate that.
Thank you, Commissioner Spiegelmann.
I know other people have questions.
Commissioner Schreiber.
I just want to make sure I understand this. So, the bright green part is what would be added green space?
Correct, that's the new green.
Okay, so, up at the top of the page, the Abington Club, and to the left is the golf course. You talked about talking to the neighbors. Is the golf course, because I know the people that are here spoke about the golf course, are the, is the golf course, the owners, are they, like, thinking that this is a good thing because it's adding green to their adjacent to?
Well, the, the, there's, the Abington Club is not the owner of the golf club property. That's owned by the John Barnes trustees, and if you go to the tax map, that, that group owns a lot of real estate. There's been, to my knowledge, no, no negative impact and no negative comments from either the Abington Club or the John Barnes trustees. There's always been a good working relationship with the Goulman Group and, and the golf club, and there's nothing that I'm aware of that has, that has changed that. I mean, there have been some incorrect, incorrect facts saying that this is going to affect the golf club because it certainly will not. And we also heard a question about and concerns about tax ratables and all. I would suggest, again, just being a lawyer, that a brand-new office building, a three-story office building with first-floor parking is going to add ratables to Abington Township.
So, when we do the land development part, if it is found that, like, that part behind the pavilion up towards where the green is being added, more could be added to make that more park-like. That's, I think, where the other commissioners were talking about, that's the kind of part of the parking lot where the lobster truck is and stuff and that, like, isn't used much? So, that could be increased even?
Perhaps, as long as we don't put any part of the property into, into a violation status. If this, I mean, there, there's a, a big history here in terms of parking, even sizes of parking spaces and number of parking. We know the consulting engineers did account and analysis of existing parking. I can say, Commissioner, if we thought there was an excess of parking, that it wasn't used and would not likely be used by new tenants and whatever, we, we will certainly take a look at the elimination of some, of some parking areas.
And one other quick question. So, is the plaza, and I know there's the new apartments that just went up?
The flats.
The flats. They're all owned by the same, are they owned by the same owner?
There may be different entities or partnerships in the various parcels, where if you go to the county records, there are a number of different, for example, we were asked by the township solicitor to look at an old easement that needed to be corrected, and it was determined that on Greenwood Avenue, in order to give a sidewalk easement, Goulman did, and a temporary construction easement, the easement had to be revised because the two abutting properties were two different partnerships or two different business entities. So, if you look at the tax parcel map, you'll see a number of different legal owners that are interacting together.
Okay, because, I mean, the flats looked nice when they were put in recently. I, I think they looked nice.
Take a little credit for that, I think.
There you go. But the plaza around there is very, there's very little green around that, and so even if it stretched around, I can see how, you know, if there was room in the park during land development. So, we, so it's not just the one area you're looking at. You said you're looking at the whole property.
I'm here on behalf of Goulman, and Goulman controls the entire area. And there were no, you know, the, yeah, I'm here on behalf of Goulman for the entire property. That's why we're showing site, the entire town center property. This is all intended to be interactive and, and really compliment.
But it'd be during land development that if there's, is other green space, that's where that would come up, not tonight?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
And, and, you know, we'll, we'll welcome any input in terms of possible areas of green space from township staff, township professional consultant, and from neighbors if they want, if they want to weigh in in a constructive, positive way.
Commissioner Bowman.
Goulman already owns this, this parcel, correct?
Yes.
The piece of green land or greenscape that's being changed, the zoning that you're seeking, is that a fallow part of the golf course? Is it a former part of the golf course, or what is it?
I, I think, Commissioner, that part of the ninth hole used to be on part of that property, and then there was some filled dirt that was placed there, and the, and the ninth hole was, I'm not a golfer, but was relocated and readjusted. So, at this point, no part of the golf course is on the area that is proposed for rezoning. In fact, yesterday, we received a, the latest review letter from the township civil engineer, and there was a question about that, and today, we sent a very detailed response with copies to Commissioner President, the Vice President, and the, and the Ward Commissioner that clarified that there is no encroachment, no effect on this proposed rezoning on the golf course. The, the adjustments have already been made, that golf course is now outside the perimeter of what we're talking about tonight.
And, okay, that was, that's all, thank you.
Are there other comments or questions for members of the board? Commissioner Weingrad.
Well, quick, and I don't know if I'm allowed to ask Mr. Hassan, because I wanted to ask a question about the stormwater that's been, that was brought up.
Go ahead.
Is that okay?
Yeah, sure.
Because there...
Commissioner?
Okay, I'll do my lawyer thing. Please introduce yourself to the jury, please.
Yes.
All right, Cal, you're the, the township engineer, right?
I am the township engineer, yes.
And there is a question about stormwater, and that is a concern of mine, and clearly that is a concern about some of the, the folks here. What is, what do we do? I mean, in other words, can, if there is a parking lot here, will it make the downstream worse? There's a creek down there, what would, what, how does that work?
As normal practice and based on the existing stormwater ordinance, has been adopted by Abington Township, any property that is going under development is responsible to address any existing ongoing stormwater issues. Furthermore, they are responsible to address any additional impervious they propose as part of the project. So, to answer your question, at the very least, they have to address any uncontrolled runoff from that green area that currently discharges on maybe residential properties or maybe downstream towards a stream, it will have to be addressed. The project will have to promote good infiltration. I am not sure yet what kind of stormwater facility there would have to be proposed or designed as part of it, but most of the times, it's some kind of an underground stormwater facility that detains the runoff that's coming to a specific design here and then discharge at acceptable rates. So, it will slow down any uncontrolled runoff after the infiltration.
So, if my concern is about neighboring properties and that stream, is that something that the stormwater management plan would have to address and consider?
It would be my job as the township engineer to make sure it is designed to the utmost requirement, and it will address any current existing issues that are affecting that stream, correct?
Also, in terms of green space, just so I understand this, there's, there could be some shrubs, there could be some trees taken down as part of this. What does Abington, what does the code say about any shrubs, trees taken down?
So, Abington Township has a very strict landscape ordinance. The, for any, any tree to be taken down, to be taken down, any tree would do a specific caliber, I believe it's about five, six inches. If it is taken down, then the opticum would have to replace it by two trees. So, for every one tree that goes down, it has to be replaced by two. And also, if this project moves forward for land development, there are other requirements as for screening, buffering, it's not necessarily small shrubs, it is, in some cases, heavy screening to be proposed and installed between the, the project and the golf course, and also between the project and any neighboring properties, residential or commercial, it would have to comply with all these requirements.
And the township engineer is involved with the, the land use planning if it were to get to that?
Correct, that, that includes the buffering, screening, lighting, all the above.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hassan.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Hassan before we?
I do. Is, has the township found that this property has come out of compliance of stormwater management currently or at any time in the past?
It's premature now to discuss stormwater at this property. I personally, I am not aware of any existing ongoing issues, but I promise the commissioners, if, again, a land development application is submitted for this project, these are the first investigative steps that we will take to be considered as part of review and approval of the project. Thank you.
Any further questions or comments for members of the board? And I can't see the president, those who are on Zoom, I don't know if there's anybody who wishes to weigh in among the commissioners. Okay, not so much. Mr. Clark, could you advise me as to the next steps here?
Mr. Jones, you have nothing further to present?
That's correct, tomorrow.
As I indicated before, Commissioner Hecker, there's no party status in this matter. Various members of the public in the room and on Zoom had the opportunity to make comments. If there's anyone in the room or on Zoom who did not previously make a comment on this agenda item, they should be permitted to do so. And then, we would have a motion to close the hearing, and then a motion to either approve or deny the map amendment.
Okay, thank you. So, start with those in the room. If there's anyone present who did not previously speak that wishes to come forward, please do so. Just, just give us your name for the record.
Hello, my name is Carlos. I am an Abington resident on Wellington Terrace.
Excuse me, you need to give your last name, please?
Carlos Londono.
Thank you.
I hear a lot of questions, I, I hear a lot of words, buffer, development, architecture, design, studies, alternatives, drainage, commitment, usage. I don't think anyone here is asking the right questions. The Abington Club was built in 1909. They purchased the land in 1996. This is definitely 100% going to affect the community, it's going to affect the Abington golf course. It's, it's going to affect for sure the golf course. For this gentleman to say it will not, it's completely false. What, the, the questions that I want to hear from you guys, it's really simple. Why do you want to destroy our neighborhood green space? Why do you need more vacant offices in our neighborhood? Why do you need more parking space for empty offices in our neighborhood? Why do we need more pollution? That my, my biggest fear is the end game. It starts off with this, then a little more, then they buy a little bit more land, and then a little more, and next, next thing you know, we have a bunch of buildings, condos, and we no longer have green space. You know, this, again, this is, this is our community, and I feel like you guys are not representing our interests. You're asking all these questions about the project, and who cares about the project? We don't want the project. We don't want any of it. You know, you represent me, and I, I didn't hear one, oh, you're, you're, you're asking, like, he's selling you something. He's selling you something and you're buying it. And, and I don't want you to buy that because we don't want it, I don't want it, my neighbors don't want it. Behind me, it's, that's my, that's, those are my neighbors. And what you guys need to understand that it's our neighborhood golf course. I think I text my buddies from the I think I text my buddies from the neighborhood at least once a week, do you want to play at the Abington Club? Do you want to play at Alvetor? And again, what's the end game, ladies and gentlemen? What's the end game? More construction, more building, just to make some folks richer? It's not right. It's not right. You guys have to step up and do what's right, okay? That's all I ask of you. And sir, thank you for talking while I'm talking, appreciate that. You especially represent me, and I didn't hear anything tonight that represents me, my family, and my neighbors. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I believe there's one other gentleman that wished to speak.
How's it going?
Good evening.
My name is Mike Benedict. I live on Fisher Road, 200 Fisher Road. First board meeting. Wow, crazy. I'm used to facts and figures, and not, not this BS that I just heard. Real quick question, are you all Abington residents? Do you need to be an Abington resident to be part of this group?
Yes.
Sweet. So you are disgusted and insulted by what you heard earlier, right? Probably all have kids, this is part of your community, that's gross. I work in corporate America. You can't present to your board without doing your homework. He doesn't have any of his facts. He doesn't know how big the building's gonna be. He doesn't know how big the goddamn building's gonna be, and he wants to build it. He doesn't know matter, doesn't know how many parking spots are there currently. What homework did these guys do? This is a huge deal for us. Our kids sled there. Where do you want your 12-year-old daughters hanging out? At a pavilion in the, in the cement, that joke of a green space we saw up there? You want your kids there, that's green? That's where you tell, tell your 12-year-olds to go hang out with their buddies? Go hang out there in the middle of the acne parking lot? That's a joke. And I understand business, big business, people got to make money, right? We want people to invest in Abington so they get a return on their investment, ROI, got it, I live it. They haven't even done their due diligence. They haven't done the homework. I heard something about drainage. Is anyone driven by acne during a rainstorm? I think I just heard someone say there isn't a, don't know of any drainage problems over there. It's three feet deep on a Sunday morning when people are going to church, because it's raining. You've been it through it, right? You guys have been through that flood? And not, we haven't even done the homework on what this is gonna do, and we're gonna green light it? This is a joke. Do your homework, come back to the community and tell us you did your homework, because you haven't done it. All BS. So go do your homework, get the facts, understand the rent, understand the tax implications, what it's really gonna do. I don't want to hear about phase two, phase three, phase four, I want to hear about the work that's done, and come back and present, present it to the community, and we'll support it. But there's no homework done, this is all bullshit. Thanks for your time.
Yes, hello. My name is Michael Cameron. I live on Eating House Road. I'm not going to try to follow up on that, except I did hear that the first floor is a parking, right? We're building this over top of parking, so, and it's a two-floor medical building. I see a very large parking lot there. I mean, there's, to the left of it, to the pavilion side of the medical building, there is lots of tar, okay? So that parking lot that they're proposing could be at least cut in half, okay? And that's yielding something. And what I hear is an unfinished, you're open to this, I hear that the Galman Group is open to discussion, so I don't think a vote is, should be, I don't think it should take place tonight, if there was one, okay? That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the room?
Are we allowed to say something else or no?
Not if you've already spoken. But I believe there are two people on Zoom who have not spoken.
Matthew Herrford.
Thank you, good evening. My name is Dr. Matthew Herrford. I'm a resident of Abington Township. I live on Wellington Terrace, and I'm honored to speak in concert with my wife and my neighbors in opposition of this zoning variance request. I'd like to fact-check a couple of statements that have been made this evening, and then talk about the salterious impact, I believe, that this variance, the proposed construction could have on our community. Before I do, I want to acknowledge that my wife and I moved to Abington from Philadelphia and decided to raise our family, bring our children here, put them into Abington Public Schools, because we were drawn to the natural beauty of this community and the strong sense of community. And what we have tonight is both a display of that strong sense of community, as you hear from neighbor after neighbor speaking out in opposition. What we have on the other side of this argument is an attorney arguing on behalf of his client for this. So I'm inspired by the voices that are speaking out against this. We were also drawn by the natural beauty, whether that was going to a concert in Albert Park, thinking about bringing our kids, as we have, to sled down that hill in the Abington Club, or meet neighbors and friends at the Abington Club. The proposal before us not only decimates some of the very green space that has helped us and others call Abington home, but as you can see, it is also dividing our community. And so the two of the things that we found most sacred about Abington and most special are being threatened by this proposal. Council for the Galman Group claimed earlier that this proposal and the proposed construction would in no way impact the golf course. That's patently and demonstrably false. It is laughable on the face that the claim that this build-out will not impact it. The rationale that was cited was that the filled dirt that was placed on top of the existing golf course, in essence, rendered the golf course no longer a golf course. By that logic, my wife and I could dump filled dirt on our side yard and then claim it's no longer residential land. Underneath that gigantic pile of filled dirt is the remnants of the golf course. So that is an egregious violation of the truth. In terms of the proposed benefits of this variance, it's been referred to repeatedly as a shot in the arm. And I'm offended by that comment as a medical professional, because the implication is that this will somehow benefit the alien patient of this community. We have already before us examples, however, of ample, empty vacant office space and lots of underused parking. So what problem exactly is they're trying to be fixed? The Galman Group has failed to invest in its property to attract and retain tenants. We got to know the owners of the coffee shop on the first floor. They told us they were leaving because of failure, lack of any flexibility by the Galman Group to engage with them around lease renegotiations. And so the Galman Group is now proposing to try and address their mismanagement of their existing property by building even more property and more parking. So how is letting them build out more of what they have already have represent a shot in the arm? It appears to be, to me, to be much more a notion of a metastatic disease than a shot in the arm. And finally, I think there have been several comments, Carlos, I think, very aptly cited the long history of that space and its importance, that it's important for us to think about the history of our region and the emphasis that has always been placed on the natural beauty and its role in bringing our communities together. In fact, William Penn said, quote, "It were happy if we studied nature more in natural things and acted according to nature, whose rules are few, plain, and most reasonable." I urge our Commissioners to put the needs of the residents and neighbors of Abington Township that have spoken here before you in the room and online, before those of the Galman, who have failed to demonstrate good stewardship of this land, strong neighborly and community-based approaches, and have not honored the sacred nature, natural space that makes Abington the kind of community that until this year, people like our family wanted to call home.
Thank you for your comments, sir.
Dana Bate.
Hi, yeah, this is Dana Bate. I live on Fisher Road, near a lot of the neighbors who have spoken tonight. And I guess I joined this meeting a bit late due to a conflict, and I kept hoping that I would hear something about the vacancy rate in the current pavilion, what the need was for this new construction, any sort of rationalization for this construction and its intended use. And really what I heard was a lot of if, if we can attract a medical practice, if we can attract tenants. And it just seems to me, to Mike's point, this hasn't been very well thought through. I don't really understand the rationale, and I think a lot of the other neighbors are saying the same thing, that they don't either. And if we're already dealing with an underused space, underused parking lot, I don't really understand, and I wish I had heard more, and I wish I had heard more questions asking about the intended use of this space and the need for it, and why it needs to be constructed, when already we're dealing with a high vacancy rate in an existing building. So I feel like if, if, if you are to proceed with a vote, I feel like there's a lot of information lacking, a lot of questions outstanding, and this really just doesn't feel like the appropriate time to move, move forward with this.
Thank you for your comments. And so we will move on. Commissioner Schreiber, did you have one last thing you wanted to?
I just want to point out that there is an, an underland, a lot of the questions that I'm hearing are things that are covered in land development, and that's what I think several of us were trying to point out, that it's not things that would be, that would come up tonight, it would come up during land development.
Thank you. Commissioner Weingrad.
Okay, I just wanted to make a, a quick comment about, about the folks that are here. Dr. Herrford, Dr. Herrford, Dr. Rosenbaum, Mr. Glazer, Ms. Kiernan, Mr. Ledone, Mr. Benedict, Mike, of course, Ms. Bate. Thank you for coming out. Your, your comments are, were eloquent, and your comments were, were on, and it came from the heart, and, and I thank you for that. I, I want you to know, in my mind, you know, that all these have been considered. To be quite honest, those are the first reactions that I had when this came up. And to say, why do you take this space and you're gonna put a parking lot on it? Doesn't make sense. And then you start diving further into it, and you're looking at the makeup of green space, and you're looking at, the golf course can stay there. You're looking at, there's still the buffer between the, the residents. And again, you know, all these have been, have been considered. So I don't want you to believe that, that they haven't, all right? And, and everything you've said is well, well done, well, and well thought out, and you folks, you are my neighbors, I mean, and you're my friends. So again, everything is considered. So again, thanks for coming out.
Okay, so now we would entertain a motion to close the hearing?
Yeah, you can, you can close the public hearing, and then a, a vote would, would be appropriate, or a motion, excuse me, would be appropriate.
Do you want to make a motion?
I move to close the hearing.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor of closing the hearing, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? The hearing's closed.
I move to adopt ordinance number 2213, amending the official zoning map of Abington Township by rezoning 2.621 acres of land from RSE Recreation and Conservation District to BC's Business Center Foxcroft District. NICE move.
Second.
The matter has been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
I believe.
No.
Okay.
Want to oppose?
Uh, no, I think there's.
Yes, Ayanna.
There's at least two.
No, three.
Three, there's three opposed. Three.
Who were they, please?
Commissioner De Placido, Commissioner Brown, and Commissioner Laney Martin.
Thank you.
Okay. Motion carries.
Commissioner Hacker, are we allowed to make a comment on the motion? I know we made comments, and, or actually, we just had questions for the hearing. I just wanted, I just wanted to make one que, I know we voted already.
You can, you can make the comment.
Is that a fine, okay, I just, I guess it's just for all of us, you know, we, it's always a slippery slope, and no pun intended for those who sled at that particular area. When we consider text amendments or changes, especially when it comes to the, to the RSE District, so that's why I'm opposing this, and I'll always oppose it. I was here when we opposed the Texas Longhorn, and I'll continue to oppose any type of, as was stated, zoning district line movements when it comes to the RSE District.
Thank you, Commissioner De Placido. Back to you, Commissioner Vehi.
Next item is BOC 12-041124, motion to adopt the Recreation, Parks, and Open Space RPO OS Advisory Committee, scope and duties. NICE move.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Are there any comments or questions for members of the board? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion carries.
Next item is BOC-13-041124, motion to approve an intermunicipal agreement with Cheltenham Township and Chingtown Borough for the maintenance of traffic signals and streetlights, and authorize the Township Manager to execute the agreements. NICE move.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Are there comments or questions for members of the board? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Next item is BOC-14-041124, motion to award the following annual public works materials bids and authorize the Township Manager to execute all contracts for the following bids. The 2024 ready-mix concrete bid, bid award to Delaware Valley Concrete Company, Inc., in amount of $59,320. And the 2024 storm sewer inlets and manhole structures bid, bid award to Commonwealth Precast, Inc., in the amount of $57,076.0. NICE move.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Are there any comments or questions for members of the board? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries.
Last item of new business, BOC-15-041124, motion to approve change order number three from the Clipper Pipe and Services, Inc., in the amount of $59,570, and Elektrik Tech in the amount of $33,667.15 for Abington Township Building HVAC upgrade project. NICE move.
Second.
The matter has been moved and seconded. Any comments or questions for members of the board? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries.
And that concludes the new business this evening, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. We will now turn to the Finance Committee, and I'll turn to Finance Committee Chair, Commissioner Stuart Weingrad.
Thanks, President Hacker. For only item, FC01041124, motion to approve the February 2024 expenditures in the amount of $3,2,684.78, and salaries and wages in the amount of $2,289,569.52, and authorizing the proper official to sign and approve invoices, and supporting documentation and payment of bills and contracts as they mature through the month of May 2024. And NICE move.
The matter has been moved and seconded. May we have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioners Brodsky?
Yes.
Rothman?
Yes.
De Placido?
Yes.
Laney Martin?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Weingrad?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Sapon?
Yes.
Young Gert?
Yes.
Feigleman?
Yes.
Boal?
Schreiber?
Yes.
Dunne?
Yes.
Vice President Vehi?
Yep, yes, sorry.
President Hacker?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you.
And that concludes the finance agenda for this evening.
Thank you, Commissioner Weingrad. We will now open it up for public comment on general matters of Township business, and we'll start with those in the room. Please come forward, state your name, and you have three minutes.
This is the first time I've ever heard, seen three people ever vote against the same thing. It's always 100%.
It's always 100% together. I was astonished. My name is Adele Cubell. I'd like to thank Mr. Rooney and volunteers for clearing Old Valley Road of filth. The expanding blight is caused by Mr. Manfredi's refusal to provide basic maintenance. John Turner and Mitchell Libby were clearing the fairway of blight. Thank you to these two gentlemen. I have seen people clearing Easton and Susquehanna Road as well. For seven years, Mr. Manfredi has ignored basic safety concerns. Maintenance issues have been of no interest to him. Developers and speculators, including Abington-Jefferson Hospital, have thrived under Mr. Manfredi's illogical regime. Mr. Mansfredi's disservice has left Abington with dangerous streets, horrendous car crashes, and now, that are now common, blighted businesses and apartments with zero standards fill Abington because of Mr. Manfredi. The Bicycle Coalition has a strong relationship with apartment developers. It is unethical that this relationship has not been disclosed. To demonstrate the relationship, I have two bullet points. The Bicycle Coalition calls for taxpayers to pay for the costs of greedy developers. Jenkington Noble area is going to have massive overdevelopment. Apartment developers are including no amenities and no parking. The park playground will be an asset to developers looking for renters. The Jenkington Noble developer should pay for and maintain their own safe parks and playgrounds. Traffic calming studies, infrastructure needs, are all developers' costs. Two, it is common knowledge that as developers create dense living, they promote biking to combat the congestion that they have caused. The Coalition has been called a tool of developers. Commissioners know that bike infrastructure has not been successful. Vision Zero has failed for over a decade. Traffic deaths for riders have risen yearly. Police officers from three separate townships have told me that promoting biking will kill in Maine. Commissioners, your standard response is bikers can have accidents or be killed anywhere. The massive overdevelopment and congestion is a recipe for biking crashes here. Instead of preventing tragedy, you are creating it. That is sinister.
Ms. Cubell, please conclude your comments. Your time has expired.
Many sidewalks and infrastructure and amenities, such as the Noble train station playground, are all going to be paid for by taxpayers for certain. Abington-Jefferson Hospital knows the commissioners will be favoring them with many zoning changes.
Ms. Cubell, your time has expired. Please take your seat.
If a hospital creates blight, what kind of hospital destroys the neighborhood it serves?
Ms. Cubell, your time has expired. Please take your seat. Is there anyone else in the room?
I've read all the playgrounds I'm finding, except Jackson Park looks fantastic.
Take your seat. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Please come forward.
Hi. My name's Nick Pillsbury. I live on Washington Lane near Fairhurst. So actually, I'm here, so I found out last night that the dedication for the Right Away was being, I guess, moved to a later date. Or it was taken off the agenda.
Yes.
So, and I found out last night, so that's why I came. Really just to express my disappointment. And I'm not somebody who normally does this. But yeah, I've been, it's been over five years now. I was here in like, 2019 when I had that whole presentation. I know all my neighbors are so ready for the sidewalk to go in. There's only a couple people who are holding it up. Like, we're not talking about leveling some, like, bigger development. It's just like a simple sidewalk for safety. You know, I have two children. I go to the, who go to AFS, go to Abington Friends School. I can't even walk into school. I live like two houses down. I can't walk into school. It's so unsafe. I just want to, all I want is a safe sidewalk. You know, I know there's a plan. There's a drawing that was done. It was, it looked like there was taking down like 30 trees on my property, which is actually not true. You can come by my house. I only have like 11 trees. And really, there's only probably like 40 trees in total that are coming down. Some of them are weak already. I actually had a 70-foot tree fall in my garage a few days ago. I'm glad it didn't fall on the car on the road. But I just want it to be over with. Honestly, it's just, I mean, it's only a couple people who are holding this up. And yeah, again, I'm not, Helen. Hold on a sec. Yeah, and I do know that the, I talked to Tim Clark and his guys, like, they're going to replace the trees, you know, like a two-to-one ratio. So this is really not going to affect that much. It's not going to change the landscape that much. It's just going to create more safety for people walking up and down the street with cars whipping by like 40 miles an hour. So that's all I want. And I just, and I know it's been delayed and delayed. I've been waiting like five years. And a whole community, I know, wants this over with. So that's all.
Understood. I can tell you, your commissioner's been working tirelessly along, on this, along with the township manager and the engineer. We're close. And we're trying to do this the best way possible. And we're close. But I can appreciate your frustration. And we would like to see it move forward as well.
Thank you. That's all.
No, thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak?
Hi, Joe Rooney in Ardsley. Sorry, I'm a little late. I had another meeting I had to go to. Just a couple of real quick issues. I didn't realize, Mr. Manfredi, that you were thinking of leaving. I'm sorry to see that personally, but I wish you well with that. And I don't know any of the details about it because I was late. But I wish them all the best. Second one is the man who drives a trash truck on Maples named Mike. And I didn't get to prepare for tonight's meeting because I didn't think I'd be here at all. He does a great job. He's getting ready to retire, I think, after 20 years here. And I'm going to see him in his, over at the township facilities and thank him personally. But it would be great when he leaves and guys like that leave just to recognize them. Because these guys who pick up trash, Justin Ardsley on Maple Avenue, that's what I see. Good guys. Wayne's there, Mike's there, a couple other guys I can't think of right now. But I appreciate the good work that they do. The third one is Atro went and cleaned up Old Valley Road just around the township, down the train station there. And I got a lot of help from Mr. Jones. I want to thank him for that. He set out some warning signs for me, gave me the cones that I needed, and then told us we could leave the trash after we picked it up. And those guys came back and cleaned it up after that. Then he flagged me down a couple days later. I was over by Memorial Park. He said, hey, Joe, I just want to tell you this. So he got a group of guys together in the township. And it, because I had walked Valley Road. And as you know, it's your district. It's a mess. So he went around Kara Brook to the Wildlife Sanctuary, whatever you call it, and cleaned that area up and went through the Boy Scout Reserve and cleaned up a lot of litter there. And I appreciate that. And I think they got like 12 bags of 40-gallon trash bags out of that. And that's really just great. So these are little tiny things that these guys are doing or that local township people are doing that really helps township on a, it might be on a micro level, but it makes a little difference. And I just wanted to appreciate the trash man, Mike, and then these other guys who were doing this stuff. And they're not getting any accolades for it, but it really does help clean everything up. And the last thing I just want to say is, again, I didn't know while everything went on, nobody wants 140 row houses at St. Basil's. Okay? And if you guys vote no, I'll give you the reason why or what we can do. The township, the school board, wants to borrow between $200 million to $400 million. They're going to try and float a bond because they say we need a new middle school. We already have a school there that's empty right now. So I can't say buy it, not in the finances. But what will make Abington better is not borrowing $400 million to build a school over in the school district. I know people are addicted to borrowing and spending money. But we got to be able to work something out with the Sisters of St. Basil to rent St. Basil's for 10 years, see if this influx of students that they're saying is going to happen and give time for a better plan of what's going on. So if you guys could say no and then work with the school district to say, there's, what is it, 25 acres? I don't know the exact number. But there's limited 25-acre green spaces in Abington Township now. To put 150 row houses in there when we could fix a school problem, maintain some open space, and give a little breathing room instead of borrowing $400 million that the next generation's going to have to pay off. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe there's one resident on Zoom.
Laura Lehman.
Laura Lehman, Meadowbrook. And, you know, as usual, there are so many things you couldn't fit them in 20 minutes. It's unbelievable what's happening in this township. So, Mr. Hecker, you violated my speaking rights tonight. And I emailed all of you during this meeting. And I see Mr. Rothman, and I see a lot of you looking down at your phones. You could care less what the residents are saying. And when you do even listen to them, you vote against them with friends like Mr. Weingrad, who needs enemies. So this is totally unbelievable to watch you literally not provide a single reason why you would support the developer over the residents who really are the owners of this township and elected you to represent them. It's very, very sad. We have a new manager coming. The manager just renegotiated his contract. I'm sure that will benefit him for years and years and years and years and years to come as he retires on this new contract that he refused to post per the policy that he's required to follow and that he has refused to give, to out to the residents, even though he was the one who didn't post it. The consent agenda, again, there's no consent on that agenda. And now, Mr. Hecker, promising expanded speaking rights when you put all these new rules in, you have used them to systematically reduce our rights. And now you are passing things that have never been to committee, never been anywhere else. And that is absolutely unconscionable in this township. In the process of the hearing that we had tonight, the residents were not told that they'd be able to speak after the presentation. And there were a lot of things in that presentation that were just completely wrong. So Mr. Hassan, if he does not know about the violent stormwater problems over the Lenox Road area that come right off of that property that you approved tonight, he should be finding another job. We can't have people. When 1209 Riddle Road hit, Pinot Noir's representative said, well, we don't think anything's on a steep slope. It was right in the plans, exactly the amount of steep slope that was in there. We need to have people that you appoint that tell the truth and that represent the residents of this community. It is absolutely unbelievable and unconscionable to see--
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Lehman. Your time has expired. And before adjournment, Commissioner Bowman has asked for a brief moment to make a statement.[1733.23]